Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the May 16th Council Study Session for the Mesa City Council. Our council is all present except for Mr. Thompson, who is out of town in excuse. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda for the May 20th formal council meeting. So, council, if you'd please refer to that document. Various purchase contracts and liquor licenses are the first several items. Please let us know if you have any questions or would like any staff presentations. Item 5 are various resolutions. I know one of those resolutions, 5L, we, I think we're looking forward to a staff presentation on the PSPRS item, but we'll do that at the end of this agenda item. Mr. Luna?
Mayor, if we could have a presentation on 5K?
5K? Oh, okay. Yes, I'm sorry. There's two staff presentations, 5K and 5L. So, and 5K is actually an agenda item on our next meeting, on this meeting as well. Other questions? Mr. Freeman?
I do. Thanks, Mayor. 4R, it's the ratification emergency purchase of fire chassis. Perhaps the fire department would like to come up and explain that, but their council report, just so that the public knows that this is in response to our delivery of services on our medical response units. Hi, Chief. Good morning.
Good morning.
You could probably explain that, too, as well.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Yes, we did have an emergency purchase of five chassis. Ford was going to stop making them for a year, and we weren't going to be able to order them until November of next year if we didn't order these five up currently. So, it's going to be for our MMR units, which are medical response units, and also for our transportation units.
Okay. So, that allows us to deliver more services during this next fiscal year?
That's correct. Our call volume continues to rise, and having these units available to us, and when we need to staff them, they're available. And also, as we increase the number of transportation units, we need to have additional units ready to go.
Okay. So, that allows us to either put an ambulance in service or the medical response unit?
Correct. Both.
Maybe I shouldn't use the word ambulance, but...
The transportation, additional transportation units and additional medical response units. Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Chief.
You bet. Thank you.
We probably should note that there are a couple items that are not on the consent agenda for Monday, and that would be Agenda Item 11, which is to conduct a public hearing on the assessment for the Mesa Town Center, and then also the public hearing that's required for the five-year CIP agenda item. So, we will be hearing more about those on Monday night. Council, any additional questions regarding the agenda before we get a presentation on 5L? Okay. Hearing none. Gentlemen, come up and tell us about the PSPRS agenda item, please.
Good morning, Mayor and council. My name is Mike Kennington, CFO here at the City of Mesa. With me is one of our deputy directors in the Office of Management and Budget. Today, Ryan's going to take us through a little bit more in depth about the item on the agenda, the pension funding policy.
Good morning, Mayor and council. In the last legislative session, so in 2018, a year ago, the legislature passed and the governor signed a new bill, a new pension law, that affects PSPRS, or the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. Mesa has two PSPRS plans, one for the police personnel, one for the fire and medical personnel, sworn personnel. The new law requires us, as the employer that has these plans, to do several things each year, and this is the first year that we're doing it because the law just came into effect. So, the first thing we're required to do as a city is to adopt a pension funding policy that includes certain funding objectives, and those funding objectives are how to maintain the stability of the contributions, how and when funding requirements will be met, and then defining a funded ratio target and the timeline for reaching that target. A funded ratio means it's the ratio of assets to liabilities. So, it's how much we have versus how much we expect to need. The second requirement of this new law is that, and it's kind of, I don't know if you'd call it semantics, but it's to formally accept the city's share of the assets and liabilities in the PSPRS system. So, these are our assets and liabilities. We already own them, but this requires us to formally say we accept them. And then, lastly, we need to post this policy that we adopt on our website. So, those are the requirements. On Monday's agenda is a pension funding policy for PSPRS that meets the requirements of the new statute. First, maintaining stability of contributions. We've talked in the past how we've established a pension stabilization reserve. So, we've set aside some money so that in the years where pension contributions increase dramatically, which has been the history, we'll have a buffer, a cushion, to help smooth out that contribution increase. And then, changes of that reserve are something that we will consider during the budget process. You'll consider during the budget process. As far as meeting funding requirements, the second funding objective, in the city's multi-year forecast, we include PSPRS pension costs, and we assume that the rate that we're contributing is going to increase. PSPRS assumes essentially that the rate that we're going to contribute is essentially flat, but we're being conservative and estimating, again, based on experience, that the rate will increase. So, that conservative forecast helps us to be able to make those contributions in the future. And we'll always budget at least the annual required contribution. That's the amount that the actuaries determine is required to keep us on that payoff schedule that we've, that we're trying to, we've targeted. So, lastly, the funded ratio target, which again is how many assets we have to liabilities, is, we're saying in the policy is 100%. We want to have everything we need in the bank to pay all of the liabilities that we, that are out there. The timeline that we, that's in the city's financial policies already from a couple years ago is 23 years from now. It was 25 years when we selected it a couple of years ago, so that's June 30th of 2042. So, the other part of the statutory requirement is that the city formally accepts the assets and liabilities. This table shows the, as of June 30th, 2018, so the end of last fiscal year, the city's two PSPRS plans and the assets and the liabilities in those first two columns. And the difference between those two is the unfunded liability in the third column, which is substantial. And so, you see that the funded status is around, well, you see the funded status, they're around 50% right now. Thank you, Mayor. That's our presentation.
I just have one comment. I know I spoke with Mike this morning, Ryan, and he said that, you know, he didn't have the updated numbers as far as the cost. You know, we selected to pay off PSPRS. We went from paying it off in 20 years, our unfinished liability, to paying it off in 25 years. Have you since heard anything in regards to the cost difference that it would cost to City of Mesa to change that period from 20 to 25 years?
Mayor, council member? No. You know, it's always going to be less expensive to pay it off sooner because the sooner you can get the money into PSPRS's hands, the sooner, in theory, they can earn 7.4%, which is what they think, they expect they're going to earn each year. Yeah, that doesn't always happen, but, but no, I don't know the cost differential between that change.
Yeah, so I'm going to request that this be pulled off of the consent agenda until I can get those numbers, but I can't vote to approve a policy to approve the changing the funding period for PSPRS from 20 to 25 years or 30 years unless I know what the cost is to the city.
Mayor and council member Whitaker, what you're referring to is the PSPRS contracts with an actuary to determine what those costs are, estimates those costs going out for the entire amortization period. Those other scenarios that council member Whitaker is talking about don't exist, so the actuary only provided us with the one scenario, the 30-year scenario. So, we don't contract, we're not actuaries, we don't have those numbers, and PSPRS doesn't have those numbers either.
Yeah. I mean, to be clear, I understand from our conversation, you don't have the numbers, but from my perspective, it would be irresponsible of me to approve a policy if I didn't know what the burden cost was onto the city by adjusting those numbers, so...
Mayor, council member, if I can just add, the date that we're, that is included in this pension funding policy is already the date included in the city's approved financial policies. So, there's no change. It's just, in fact, it already exists. It's just putting it into this formal policy that now we have to adopt. It's already, it's already there in our, in the city's financial policies.
Yeah, so Mayor and council, we're not changing anything from what we disclosed to you in the past. I guess, you know, the actuarials gave us a 10-year schedule, and that's all they're willing, you know, that's kind of the standard as far as back as they will go. It's like a lot of things you heard today, that they're making a presumption of 7.4% in returns. We don't know if that's going to happen. So, I get it. It would be nice to have a crystal ball that could give us all this information, but the reality is relying on, the actuarial reports beyond 10 years will not be a definitive. What this does provide for us is nothing different than how we have been presenting this to council for the last two years. There is a difference if we were to change, and we're trying to be as aggressive as possible, but like anything, you can pay off your mortgage in 15 years or 10 years, but you know you're going to be paying more each month to do that or each year. And the same thing applies here. You have to make a choice, and we get it. There's interest cost implied if we extend the time. We're getting, we're less than the 30 years, so we're paying it less than 30 years. We're at 25. You know, we would love to be less than that in years where we can. We will contribute as much or more than we can. But even to go to the 20-year, next year, I think it was going to be another $6 million to the city, and that's, that's a lot of money, you know? And there's only a few places where, to cover public safety costs, we can come up with $6 million. We can either reduce $6 million out of operations of police and fire. We can't, we just passed the public safety sales tax, and, you know, there's the other favorite, the contribution from the enterprise fund. So, all of those are, we're limited in what we can do to come up with $6 million just for pension costs for public safety.
Yeah, I want to be clear. The money is not allocated from the enterprise fund. The enterprise fund money comes to the general fund, and it's up to the discretion of council how those monies get distributed. So, to say that that money directly comes from public safety is discretionary policy of the city council, not specific earmarked or restricted funds coming from the enterprise fund.
That is correct. However, Mayor and council, it has been the practice for over a decade to identify those funds for public safety.
I have a couple of questions, actually. So, this is a new requirement that's been imposed on us by the legislature. Really, I think it's just to remind us of what we all already know, which is that we have this liability and that we need to be working on it pursuant to the previous legislation that they passed, saying that we need to be working on it. Again, what we're working on is a problem that was created by the legislature, but thank you for reminding us of the problem that you created for us, and we'll be happy to acknowledge that annually in the, through this process. So, what we're doing on Monday is not adopting a new plan. It's the plan that we adopted two years ago. It's just acknowledging, fulfilling the, checking the box that the legislature requires us to remind everybody that we're working on our unfunded public safety pension liability. Yes. So, I don't think that any policy is being developed on Monday night. It's just acknowledging, just formalizing it. So, and we already did go from, we checked the 30-year option, and the actuaries at the time said, okay, here's the difference between 20 years and 30 years. They don't have a 25-year schedule because that's our own policy. We're going to pay it off early and try to save some money. The other thing that I think it's good to remind ourselves is when we keep talking about, well, it's obviously more expensive the longer we take because there's interest. Well, that's a little bit misleading because, no, we haven't borrowed this money, and now we're paying a bank interest in it like a mortgage. The sooner we're fully funded, the sooner we're fully funded. And so, the sooner we give all of this money to these amazingly wonderful investment counselors that work for PSPRS, the more money they'll be making for us. You could debate the question of, could our money be better spent other places rather than moving it over to the PSPRS fund to let them invest it? That's a conversation for another day. So, that's just, I think, to clarify what we're doing today. We're not making a decision that hasn't, wasn't made two years ago. But I do, I would like to know a little more about the pension stabilization reserve. I know we initiated that account, so that we don't have the sharp peaks and valleys. In one year, we have to come up with $6 million more than we were anticipating, and so I get that that's a wise policy that you've encouraged, encouraged us to adopt, but aren't, are we actually, well, we're on the cusp of going through another hiring spike in, in public safety personnel with the advent of the quarter cent sales tax. Do we already know that we're going to need to dip into the, to this fund to smooth out our pension liability, our annual pension liability for our active-duty officers, or is that already plugged into our, the numbers that we've...
That's, yes, Mayor. So, when we did the calculation for staffing and the impact, yeah, so for every position that we presumed could be funded under the public safety sales tax, we also have made an assumption of their burden of the pension liability also, so...
So, we're not already planning on tapping into that?
Yeah. What happens is what changed, what's changed in the past, remember, there were the lawsuits, and the lawsuits got settled out, and then we had to make payment, we had to do catch-up payments, for lack of a better word. But, you know, we still see concerns about their presumed rate of return that they think they can earn, and we're concerned whether they're going to be able to achieve that. There's a lot of instability. You can read in the newspaper about the leadership and how things are happening, and so we, and this is, the stability fund reserve has been well received by our rating agencies because it gives us this time, if there is a spike, that we can absorb it in that. It's just, it's like another savings account, but because of the volatility that we've experienced from the pension funds, we've used this as a way to cushion against that and not have to impact other operations of the city. So, that's been our philosophy for, for having that reserve.
Okay. Thank you. So, we can take it off the consent agenda and, if necessary, have some of these discussions again on Monday, but, yes, I'm sorry.
Really quick, so, just clarifying question. We've already made two years of payments, right? So, we're sticking, it's 23 years now. We're sticking with that, those years, not, it's not 30 years or...
No.
25 years?
Yeah.
We already have two years.
Correct.
Moving forward with that.
Okay. We haven't changed anything that we discussed two years ago.
Sure. Okay.
From what I understand, the purpose of this presentation and having it on our agenda is for the council and city to acknowledge and accept the liability that we have incurred due to this plan. Is that correct? So, that's what we're approving?
That's one of them, yeah. That's my understanding, and it's because there's been a new law passed by the legislature that says annually, cities have to have this on their agenda and acknowledge this.
Yeah. And under the current plan, I do see a benefit in keeping it as is so that we have the flexibility in our budget. If there's an impending recession, you know, we keep on trying to guess when this is, and hopefully it'll never come, but just like in our own home mortgages and such, sometimes we keep it longer term than we can afford to have that flexibility and pay it, pay down as much as we can when things are good and hold back and, you know, to have that flexibility. So, I think having, continuing on this current plan, I think, gives us the flexibility to be responsible to running our city.
Thank you. And we could, obviously, if there's a period of time where we want to make a bigger payment, we absolutely can, and we try to make the payments as early on in the fiscal year as possible. I think that's one of the things we look at. Is that correct?
Yeah, in the past, we've definitely looked at timing of the payments.
So, we try to use every opportunity to reduce the impact.
Thank you. Other questions regarding this item? Mr. Luna?
I just think that two years ago, we were proactive. We could have gone to 30 years, and we decided to go 25, and now we're two years into it, and so we only have 23 years more to go, and we're just cleaning up the language. I mean, it's not, it's not rocket science here, so, so I'm going to, of course, support this.
Thank you. Okay. So, for now, it'll be off the consent. Is that, would you like it off this consent? Okay. Thank you. Moving on. Thank you, gentlemen. The next, I think that, does that, council, any other questions regarding the formal agenda for Monday, with the understanding that Agenda Item 5K, we will be talking about under Agenda Item 2B for this meeting? Does that make sense? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on then to the agenda for this morning's meeting. Agenda Item 2A is to hear a presentation and discuss the proposed annexation, rezoning, and council use permit to allow for a 60-acre mixed-use development known as Gallery Park at the northeast corner of Power and Ray Roads.
And Nada, this, remind the council, this is also on their agenda, correct?
That's correct. For Monday.
Monday.
Eight.
There you go.
And 8A and 8B.
Yeah, so this also is on your agenda, Mayor.
Sorry. Thank you. 8A and 8B on Monday night. Nada, thank you.
Good morning, council, Mayor. So, the project before you today, as you'll be considering on Monday, is a mixed-use development on the west side of Power, north of Railroad, as you can see here. The current general plan designation on the property is mixed-use activity, and basically, the goals of the mixed-use activity designation is to encourage large-scale development that is of regional attraction and also create a sense of place, and it's also kind of a sense of strong viable commercial activities that has sometimes components of residential, basically high-density residential as well. The site is also located in the Gateway Strategic Plan, specifically the Ina Loop District, and this district was created, or the strategic plan was created to ensure that uses that are going into the area is compatible with the airport activities, and also it creates kind of a center of place that support the future expansion and all activities that surrounds the airport as well. This is the aerial picture showing location of the site, again, north of Railroad and east of Power Road. It's 58 and plus or minus acres. The airport is on the east side, as you can see on this aerial map. This is a site photo that we took when we went to the site. So, specifically, the request before you, the one you're going to be considering on Monday, is an annexation. The property is currently located in the county, so it needs to be annexed into the city, and also rezoning from agriculture to limited commercial. So, with the annexation, it comes with a base zoning, which is going to be agriculture. And with your rezoning approval, I will move it from agriculture to limited commercial. As part of the request, the applicant is also requesting a planned area development, and the reason behind this is because this is a large-scale unified development that has certain high-quality standards of beyond basic standards, they are also asking for certain modifications, example, height, increase in height, reduction in setback in exchange for certain high-quality landscaping and design to basically create a high standard, and that's basically the intent of a planned area development. They are also asking for a council use permit, and the reason or the purpose for the council use permit is to allow multi-residents in the airport over flight area two. Currently, our zoning ordinance require any multi-residents to obtain a council use permit, and I'll explain that when I get to the specific site plan for that. Also, any commercial entertainment in the airport over flight area two requires a council use permit, and the intent of this council use permit is for the council to evaluate each project individually as it comes in with specific standards to make sure it fits into the right location. That's why it's not permitted by right. So, this is a specific site plan, or one of the site plans, showing the overall development, the uses, where they are going to go. If you look, the main entrance is going to be on Power Road, and this area is what the applicant is calling Main Street Park. It's got a splash park, and it creates kind of a sense of entrance into the whole development. On the east side, the applicant is requesting over, I think it's 420 residential units, and also in the main entrance, these two buildings, which I have highlighted on the site plan, I'll show you, there is a mixed-use building. The applicant is requesting to have 39 units as part of the mixed-use development. So, overall, this are where the uses are going to go as currently proposed. So, this is the specific site plan, and the highlighted, unfortunately moved a little bit, but these two buildings specifically is where the applicant is asking 39 units to be part of the mixed-use building or structure. Our code requires a special use permit for multi-residents in the AOA two, the airport over flight, and so it gives the council the opportunity to evaluate the project to make sure it fits into the area. And in terms of this development, this is very unique in the sense that it's a high-density area, it's going to be mixed-use, there's going to be a lot of intensity, and it's going to create an environment for people who wants to have that kind of activity, who doesn't want to, who wants interaction to really live there. And if you look at even the surrounding area, there are a lot of retail, non-residential uses, so this kind of fits into the development that is already happening in the corner or the whole corridor as well. And I would say, so when we reviewed the project, we referred the project to the airport, and the airport responded, I think, October, or early November, I think it's April, October 1st or November 1st, and they expressed concerns with allowing any kind of multi-residents or resident in the AOA two. And I would stress that, so, single family is totally prohibited in the AOA two. It's only multi-residents that is allowed, and the reason why the zoning ordinance does allow for a council use permit is to make sure that not all multi-residents are the same. You have to evaluate the project to make sure that it fits into the location, what are all the mitigation measures that could actually reduce a possibility or the impacts from noise, the airport noise and all that. So, that's why it's not allowed by right, and it has to come to council. It has to be evaluated based on the special use permit criteria.
I'm sorry, Nada, I'd like to, is the only reason that, when you're in the AOA two area, that we have the limitation on residential that requires the council use permit, is it the concern limited to noise?
So, noise is one factor. There are other several factors as to compatibility, how compatible is it? Does it fit into the right area? What is the uses that are surrounding it? So, there is, basically, if you look at the special or the council use permit, the criteria, one first criteria is to make sure that it conforms to the general plan and the limited commercial district. So, we have to look at the entire general plan designation, the land use surrounding it. We also have to consider the location of the development, the design component, what is being designed, the noise attenuation, the buildings to reduce any noise. We have a certain decibel standards right now. The code requires the development to have, or the residential component to have a minimum of 45 decibels. So, when you're inside the building, the noise level is 45. We also have to look at the density that is being proposed, and then basically the operational characteristics of the use, so you don't put a multi-resident close to the airport that is standalone, that basically is going to absorb all the noise that are coming out. So, there are so many factors that we have to evaluate the project with as well, and also finally have to make sure that it's, you know, it's not detrimental to the surrounding area. So, you have to look at what are the uses surrounding it? Is the proposed use going to be compatible as well? So, there are several criteria that we have to evaluate with.
Thank you. Mr. Luna has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. What about hotels or those long-stay facilities? Is that compatible for this application?
So, there, yes. If you look at a request before you, they are proposing hotels, colleges, and commercial trade schools in the airport over flight area one and two, which also requires council use permit. And so, the reason why that also requires council use permit is to make sure that we evaluate the project based on the criteria that I describe about, so it doesn't go in straight away to make sure that, you know, it's well-evaluated or it's well-reviewed.
Excuse me, Nada. Jim?
I have just one question. So, in the yellow area on your...
I have just one question. So in the yellow area on your AOA two, AOA dash two, I see that that's multi-family or, I assume apartments?
Condos, to my understanding, yes.
Do you know if those are rentals, or?
I think the applicant can answer that. I'm not sure whether it's going to be rental or for sale.
Okay, never mind. There's a presentation afterwards, so.
Yes, there is.
We're going to invite Mr. Pugh up to represent the applicant after Nana's presentation.
Okay, thank you.
So this is the design guidelines, and I know this looks very nice, and we are believing that this is what is going to get built, but the assurance that we have with this is there are specific design elements requirements. So they have over 100 pages of, basically, every building is supposed to have certain basic elements. So, example, those facing the main street, you have to have certain percentage of transparency on the ground floor, color palette, there is all this roofs, design, landscaping, and all that. So overall, when you basically pick the minimum elements that are in the design guideline, this is what we are hoping is going to result into. So the Planning Commission considered this case, and they really were excited or were happy with the design guidelines and the type of development being proposed, and they actually encouraged the developer and all of us to work to make sure we actually attract such development, mixed-use, high-quality design standards. And as part of that, I think a couple of weeks ago, you know, one of these meetings, one of the staff, Planning and Zoning Board members actually expressed his excitement about this project as well. However, they also discussed the necessity to really protect the AOA two, and in their discussion, they said, well, this is a unique development in itself. This is not a standalone. If you look at the overall development, having high-density residential as part of the development is a right fit into the design or the development of the area. So they were fully in support of the proposal. In addition to that, they discussed the requirements to have noise attenuation measures, basically noise mitigation measures, to have, you know, the certain level of decibels in the units as well. So with those mitigation measures and the overall development, they were really happy with the proposal. The Design Review Board also reviewed the design, and for the past month, they've been referencing this project that, you know, for quality design, look at this as well. So both Planning and Zoning Board and the Design Review Board were happy with the design as presented. So the Planning Commission recommended approval to EU Council. Staff is also recommending approval, and that concludes my presentation. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Nana, have there been changes to this plan since Planning and Zoning recommended it, that we should, that might prompt us to want to go back to Planning and Zoning, or are they substantial enough that, maybe not substantial enough, that we can just talk about them?
There's been no changes. So the site plan before you and all the design elements were the same presentation or the same project that went to Planning Commission, so you are considering the same consideration.
Great. Thank you. Questions for Nana? We will hear from the applicant, but any questions for our city staff? Jeremy?
Just to clarify, Nana, is this, I'm assuming, is this something that we're voting on on Monday's agenda? Is that right?
That's correct.
And is staff in full support of this?
Yes, staff is fully in support.
And the P&amp;Z Board?
And Planning and Zoning Board as well, and the Design Review Board.
Thank you.
It is a little unusual to have a presentation in this context for a Monday zoning case, but I think the staff thought was, this is somewhat unique because that we are deviating from some of our recommendations, and so it's worthy of a kind of more robust hearing.
And Mayor, we want to hear from the applicant. I think that's an opportunity. Council doesn't always get to hear from the applicant, but also we have representatives from the airport, and they certainly have a viewpoint that we thought was important for council to hear also.
Sure. Mr. Freeman?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Nana, the conditions of approval, were those instituted by the P&amp;Z Board, or by the applicant, or by the city?
It was instituted by the P&amp;Z with staff recommendation. So normally, we make recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Board, and they'll basically make recommendation on those conditions of approval.
Okay, and that's great. I think this is a unique development with the annexation component and with the build-out of the parcel. It's critical that we weigh in. But then, I think also, noise is also an important component when we deal with these, because I know in my district, I'm dealing with some noise mitigation issues with aircraft, so I just want to make sure that those agreements are met, so that people know that in the future when they sign contracts.
Thank you.
To clarify, Nana, in these conditions of approval, are there, they set in like a development agreement, or in some sort of document?
So your approval of the planned area development with the conditions of approval goes with it, so those conditions absolutely have to be met.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
If there's no other questions, Mr. Pugh, would you like to make a presentation?
Good morning, Mayor, council members. I'm Ralph Pugh, and it's a pleasure to be here today on behalf of Mr. Devin Wasjack and Jose Pombo, who are here with us on the front row. They are the principals of Vivo Development Partners, who are the group that initiated the concept here and brought about this project. Mayor, we appreciate the few minutes we have today. Mr. Appia and Ms. Davis from the Planning Department have done an outstanding job in being patient with us over many, many months, working through the complex details of a mixed-use project. You can imagine, it took a lot of coordination. Another unique feature of this is that this land, until a few weeks ago, was obviously owned by the state land, and it's complicated to purchase land from the state land department and to annex it into a municipality. It happens, but it's complicated. That event has occurred. The land has been purchased by Vivo Partners and is on your agenda Monday for annexation as an antecedent to this zoning case. So with that complexity, we're here today, we're grateful for the staff's effort and all that they've done, and we recognize today the importance of the airport. I mean, we're not oblivious to that fact, and the airport is a critical element to Mesa's vitality. This mixed-use development project is equally important. It will bring people, it will bring business, it will bring interest in our airport, and frankly, those who patronize the airport and use it will find this mixed-use development a very convenient site to stay, to find hotel rooms. There'll be companies who will want to occupy some of the loft units that we're presenting, and so we're excited to bring it forward. What we'd like to do, Mayor, is just focus for a minute on the mixed-use nature of what we're talking about here. So, Nana, I did present to you a concept, the front page of the design guidelines and one of the pages in it. This is the single most comprehensive set of design guidelines I've seen in handling zoning cases for a few years in Mesa, and the Planning and Zoning Board recognized that, and the Design Review Board in a heartbeat recognized that and recommended wholeheartedly to you. Here's the concept that we're talking about. This is the sense of arrival at Gallery Park. It is the main street area. It is the focus of where the environment will have commercial uses, retail uses, and those types of things. There will be multi-story offices on the freeway side of the project on the north end. So this truly harmonizes offices, entertainment, hotels, restaurants, retail, and it's all under the Gallery Park theme. So without boring you with those details, every quadrant of this project and many of the tenants will have design themes and artwork that represents art galleries and all that comes with that. There'll be fun events, there'll be gatherings here. It will be a very, very busy place. It will be a very, very noisy place, and those people who choose to live in the 39 loft units that we're presenting, they are over the commercial and retail areas here. See if I can find an example of that. Hold on. This is a good example right here. So, just as an example, you see the business there identified as Urban Farmer. That's a generic name, right, for any retail use that could go there. But above it are loft units, and that's what we're talking about here today, and we're talking about 39 of these units in indeed the AOA two area. So I think we should ask ourselves, why do we have a council use permit process to allow multifamily in the AOA two area if there aren't certain circumstances when it should be allowed? This is indeed it, council members, in our opinion. I think the staff recognized that, the Planning and Zoning Board recognized that, and as much as we appreciate the good work of our friends at the airport, that they're vigilant, they're diligent in what they do, this, in our opinion, is one of the locations where we should recognize that a council use permit can authorize the living environment that you see here in the second floor of these units. Here's another example on the other side of what it might look like above the Yarn West and the Hops Burgers and that type of thing. So, those people who choose to live here, and in answer to Councilmember Duff's question, the issue with respect to ownership and rental is somewhat in flux. Our intent for the moment is that these will be rental units. They will likely have long-term rental components to it because we're expecting that there will be businesses that want to occupy the high, multi-level office component along the freeway, who will want space for their employees, their executives to stay. Lots of things can happen here. So that whole topic is a little bit in flux. We're very flexible on that, but that will be the initial design. Again, with respect to noise, as Mr. Appia indicated, we have provided an acoustic study, both to the staff and to the airport, indicating that we will minimize and reduce the noise beyond those requirements of the airport.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Mr. Pugh, I had a question relative to the actual construction to mitigate some of the noise, because you're going to have jets flying in and out of the airport.
Yeah.
What kind of construction materials do you use to mitigate those kind of noises? I know it's going to be noise. You're by an airport, but it's going to be really noisy there. So maybe talk to me about the materials you're going to use or that's being planned to offset some of the noise and mitigate some of those things.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Luna, now you're asking a really, really hard question that I don't know the technical answer to. What I know is this, the current building code requirements already have in them certain requirements today that mitigate noise to a much better level than the code did before that, and our development plan includes materials, manners of construction, locations of those materials that will mitigate that. We have a full study on it. I can provide it to you, Councilmember, but I cannot articulate it to you today. If that's okay with you, we'll get that to you and provide all that detail. Mayor, that's in a nutshell is what we're talking about. Again, we urge you to give all deference and respect to the airport, which you all have done vigilantly and faithfully over the years, how well we know, and in this instance, we're only talking about these 39 units that are in the main street area. Now, remember too, if you would please, the people who choose to live there want this environment. It's already going to be a very busy place, a very noisy place, and it's going to be gathering. There'll be events, there'll be music, there'll be activities, there'll be festivals. So the folks that want to be there, they want that environment, and they look for it, and being close to the airport is another thing they will want to do. And we're not of the opinion that the noise will affect them, especially with mitigation, and it's something that they, they're there for a reason, and they choose this location. So we're proud to bring this project to Mesa. I could go on and on, but thanks for the invitation to spend a couple of minutes with you today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Nana, do you have anything to add to Mr. Luna's question on the noise attenuation requirements above and beyond just our normal building code?
Yes, I do. Well, I'll try and also be a little bit of an engineer.
Help me, please.
But the sort of building design, if you look at the walls, have to be designed in a certain way. That's part of it to really reduce the noise. So basically, when you're inside a building, the maximum noise decibels has to be 45 decibels. So the design, you know, the openings and all that you have, that's why we require an engineer or professional architect to basically certify the plans to make sure that you will be able to achieve that noise decibels.
Mayor, if I could, Devin and Jose both, either one of them could answer that in a lot more detail, if Councilmember Luna or others would like more specifics on noise attenuation. They know how, they know what it is.
Okay, and, okay, go ahead, Mr. Luna.
Yeah, just have them email.
Okay. Jose or Devin, can one of you help us with the noise attenuation?
Well, I think Ralph was saying that he's happy to just get it later.
Oh, we'll get the study. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Okay.
But, Nana, just to summarize what you said, that we do require that the plans be certified by an engineer, saying that the materials that are going to be used will be sufficient to, so that the decibel level will be 45 or less in the housing units.
Absolutely. That's part of the conditions of approval. So we make sure that the plans, when they submit, there is a certification to ensure that those decibels will be met.
I'd like to request that that information is shared with the entire council, because noise mitigation due to airplanes is something that covers most of our city, and we're faced with those issues again and again. If we can understand a little bit more about how design can combat that, I think it'd be useful.
Mayor, we'll provide it to everyone. We cannot promise that it will be interesting reading. You should choose a moment when you're ready to nod off. It will be fun to read at that time.
Oh, council reading in general is, is not far off from that.
Thank you, Councilmember Duff.
Okay, council questions for Mr. Pugh. We also do have a blue card to speak from the airport, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council member.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Pugh, you've been working with Mr. Thompson about this. Councilmember Thompson, he's in agreement with everything in alignment?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Freeman, we have been visiting with Councilmember Freeman. I hesitate to speak for him, obviously, but we feel good about that.
He did send a message yesterday. I apologize, I should have said at the beginning that he does support this project. So he wanted to make sure the council knew that.
Okay.
He's been involved all the way. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers.
We do have a card to speak, and we'd like to welcome Brian O'Neil. And is Tony going to join you, Brian?
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. These are our great partners at the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brian O'Neil. I'm the Executive Director for the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport Authority. Tony Bianchi is the Authority's Airport Planning Manager, and we are here today to speak about Gallery Park. Thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to speak. There are many aspects of this exciting mixed-use proposed development project that we really do support, and we think there's going to be a lot of benefit to the region, economically, a lot of benefit to the airport as well. However, in our Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan update, we have identified residential in the aircraft overflight area two as in incompliant land use. And so we are here today to remind the mayor and vice mayor and council that the airport needs to be consistent throughout the region, regardless of the project, regardless of the community. We really need to remain consistent and oppose residential development in the AOA two. Having said that, we do recognize the uniqueness of this project. When you've got residential lofts above restaurants and bars and an entertainment district, I think there's a different expectation for the interior noise environment, and we do acknowledge that. And, you know, I think this project is going to be really good for the region. However, it's important that we remain consistent and oppose any residential development, regardless of the uniqueness and regardless of the expectation of the interior living environment. We need to oppose it just so that we are consistent with our message and consistent with the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan update document that we recently approved, the board recently approved, and it's required by the FAA that we protect the land uses around the airport. So although we're supportive of this project, and we understand the uniqueness of residential in this mixed-use project, we are still opposed to any residential development that occurs in the AOA two. And, Tony, do I need to add anything?
No, if you don't mind, I'll add.
Please.
Talk about the height. So, good morning, Mayor and council members. We've had numerous discussions and meetings, both with Nana and the applicant on this project, moving it forward. We do believe that the intent is captured in the conditions for the case itself. Our preference would be to have some preferred, our preference would be to have stronger language, especially when it deals to the height compatibility. It's included in that in the letter that Nana spoke about, that you received right around November 1st as well. November 1st as well. We, again, we think this is a unique proposal, but there are indeed flight safety considerations that go and go along with this. However, we do think this is a good example of the updated airport overlay district that you approved last year. This has been a good exercise for us to go through because it's been assisting us in this project review and that evaluation.
Thank you. Gentlemen, before you leave, yes, Mr. Luna.
Mr. O'Neill, would you approve itinerant housing, where it's not permanent housing, but let's say vacation rental by owner or something that's not permanent housing? Is that something that would the airport would be, is that, would you be in favor of something like that?
Mayor Giles, members of the council, that's why I brought Tony with me, so I don't misstep and misspeak. So would we allow itinerant housing in that, or is that still classified within the residential?
I think that maybe goes to the earlier question over, you know, long-term hotels and so forth, as Nana talked about, hotels are an applicable land use through this, through certain conditions. So we'll ask for the navigation easement, which is allowed, which is being provided through this, as well as noise attenuation. So that's been considered through the conditions as well. So, you know, I'd almost consider that more of a long-term hotel stay as well, you know.
So, yes?
I would say any residential itself, again, that's why I think the distinction between hotel is, it's more of a transient lifestyle as far as, you know, you're only coming for a couple of days. I would almost think intermittent housing like that would categorizes that as well.
So your policy is to oppose residential, but you don't include in the category of residential hotels?
Yeah, again, that's why it's been conditioned the way it is. And I think it's very similar to the process you went through with the courtyard just across the street on Ray there.
Thank you. But before you leave, I do want to ask the question, Nana, we've talked a lot about the, just the compatibility and the noise. The issue was raised with regard to flight safety and the height of the structures. What can you tell, is there any concern over that?
We do not have any concerns, and there are specific height restrictions on each of the buildings. So we have a condition that limits the maximum height to 75. And we've had this discussion with the airport and my, from the last conversation we had, they did not have any concern with the height limitations.
Okay, thank you. Jeremy?
I just want to clarify, because I've heard you say both things. You do or you don't support approving this project?
Mayor, members of the council, we support this exciting mixed-use project. However, there's a component of the mixed-use project, those 39 loft residences that are located in the entertainment district above restaurants and bars, that we can't support those, we can't, we can't support those because we have identified those as an incompliant, incompatible land use. So the overall project is exciting. We think it is going to be beneficial to the region economically. We think it's going to be beneficial to the airport. However, there is one component, those 39 loft residential units that are unique, because we, I don't think those are going to be developed anywhere else in the, in the region or within the AOA 2. But because we need to be consistent, regardless of the project, regardless of the community, we need to be consistent with our Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan update, we oppose the development of those 39 units. But overall, we think the project is an exciting project adjacent to the airport, and we certainly support the overall project. So I think it would be difficult for me to say it's either all or nothing, because there are so many elements of that project that are beneficial, exciting to the airport. But those 39 residential units, we need to remain consistent and oppose those.
Which is how it sits today. We'll be voting on Monday, I'm assuming, to push this through with the 39 residential units.
Mayor Giles, members of the council, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You bet. Council, discussion on this item. I have a few thoughts. And in addition, one of my assignments on the council is to serve on the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport Authority Board. So this, these are gentlemen that I work with routinely and that I, they're very professional and I'm on the same side as the airport. Part of, one of the hats I wear is to protect the airport, as we all do. So I'm particularly sensitive to their, them being here and expressing concerns. So I, but I am, I see this as a very exciting development. I share the enthusiasm that was, that our planning and zoning board and our staff, I think, have demonstrated for this already. This will be very similar, I think, to the Dana Park development, for example. It will be a regional attraction. It'll be a real point of pride for the city of Mesa. So I'm anxious to see it go forward, but of course, we have to evaluate it in a responsible way. The reason we need a council use permit on this is because we have to ask the question, is it compatible? And are the noise issues being addressed? I'm comfortable that the noise issues, number one, I think it is extremely compatible. This kind of exciting mixed-use urban development next to the airport is actually very compatible, will be an asset to that. But again, we do have to seriously question the noise issue. As I go to Gateway Board meetings, every meeting we have, we discuss noise complaints. In every meeting, there's, Brian gives us a report, how many noise complaints do we have this month, Brian? And it's six or seven or eight, or, and we compare it to previous years. And the, I think it's fairly common that those complaints come from, I guess, the stereotypical noise complainer would be someone who lives in a single-family home that's sitting in their backyard, enjoying their morning coffee, and they don't like the fact that they hear an airplane fly over their backyard. Less so multifamily, less so hotels or short-term rentals. So I think if this project were including single-family homes, I would have a difficult time voting for it. But it's not. It's this either short-term rentals or something more akin to a hotel, frankly, than it is to a normal residential neighborhood. So, and as the airport indicated, they have to be consistent. They can't, you know, go up to a Queen Creek Planning and Zoning hearing and say, we'd rather you not build single-family homes under the runway. They can't do that and then not show up at the Mesa City Council meeting and say, we have concerns about a noise attenuation building that, for multifamily, that's part of an exciting mixed-use retail development off the corner of the runway to the north. So I get why you're here and I'm on your side, but I think moving forward with this project is something that's going to be very good for this part of town, it's something that's going to be very complimentary, and it's going to help the development of the airport rather than deter from it. Yes, Mr. Freeman?
Not to one-up you, Mayor, but I just appreciate planning and zoning discussion, bullet points in here in the staff report, because it allows me to think what they were thinking as well, and then also the recommendations, so that planning and zoning board and they're voting unanimously. But yeah, I'm in support of the project. I know that noise is a big issue that will always come forward and regardless of where we live, but if that's taken care of, then I'm good with the project. Thank you.
Really, I appreciate that we had this presentation, because this is, I'm glad we can start getting the word out, this is going to be a very exciting development and something we're going to be proud of for generations in our community. So thank you for bringing this great development to the city. All right, that concludes Agenda Item 2A. Next, Agenda Item 2B is to hear a presentation and discuss the history of the approximately 132 acres of city-owned real estate located at the northwest corner of Recker and Thomas Roads, and to provide direction on the sale of this property for the final auction bid of $21,100,000, with some of the sale proceeds being reinvested into the development project at this location, the Red Mountain Ranch Homeowners Association Park, and city-owned recreational facilities in northeast Mesa. Angelica, thank you for being here.
Good morning, Mayor, good morning, council. I'll just go ahead and jump in if you're ready. So I'm here to provide a bit of the history of the property at the northwest corner of Thomas and Recker. So back in 1983, it was part of the zoning case for Red Mountain Ranch. It was part of that initial master plan for 820 acres. And as you can see in the map that's on that slide with the blue arrow, that is the property. It's 132 acres at the northwest corner. In 1985, the overall Red Mountain Ranch master plan had some modifications of 450 acres to allow a bit higher density, which brought it up to 2,570 units. And then in 1989, there was additional modifications, which actually ended up bringing the density lower. But during all of that time, that property at the northwest corner was identified for commercial office or industrial development. There wasn't a specific plan that was approved for it, but it was identified as part of that Red Mountain Ranch master plan. So moving forward to 1998, there was a, another rezoning request from a developer to change the zoning and the general plan on the area from industrial to residential. That request became controversial. It had been at several public hearings, and it got continued several times. As it was looking like that case was maybe not going to move forward, the city manager recommended that the property be purchased for the development of a future district park. There is a memo from the city manager indicating that the southern portion of the site would be developed with more active types of uses, such as baseball or soccer fields, and that the northern portion of the site would be developed with passive types of uses, such as jogging or hiking trails. What you see here is the development plan that was provided with that 1998 rezoning case. So the city went ahead and purchased the property in 1998, purchased it for $4,026,000, and used general obligation bonds to purchase the property. So after the purchase of it, in fiscal year 98, 99, there was a design that the city had done for that district park. The city used about $850,000 of existing bonds for that design, and it did include lighted baseball and soccer fields, picnic areas, and so forth. And also, staff had also identified at that time that there was an additional 8.5 million that were needed in order to actually build the park. So the city went out and requested bond money in order to build the park. It went on the March 2000 ballot as question number eight. The overall bond package that was requested in March of 2000 was $62.2 million, of which 8.5 million of it was for the development of the district park. And the results of the election were not favorable. About 55.1% of the voters actually turned that bond down, so that did not move forward. And there was concerns from the city about that park development not moving forward at that time. The city went ahead and formed a citizens' bond review committee who was concerned with the lack of services that would be provided in the community in that area of town. And what they did is they went through and looked at all of the projects that had been proposed on that ballot, prioritized the projects, and tried to identify the ones that should move forward or not. What they ended up doing was recommending to council that they go back out to the voters. And they prioritized projects, and they also identified that they thought that what was needed at the time was clearer language. They thought that the voters were not sure of what exactly they were voting on in March of 2000. So the item went back to the voters in September of 2000 as question number two. This time, the bonds that were requested were about $13 million, but 9.4 million of that was for the construction of what at that time was described as a new large city park. And same thing, it included a lot of the similar amenities that had been identified for the March 2000 bond package. The results of that bond election were also not favorable. This time, it was actually a little worse. 58.3% of the voters did not support the bonds. And so moving forward, in 2001, because the city owned the property, what was customary at that time from the planning division was to go through and take city-owned property and rezone it to a PF or a public facility category. What the public facility district allows is large-scale government, public utility, recreational, and educational facilities. And so the 132, 33 acres were rezoned back in 2001. In addition, there was a staff report from the planning staff that indicated that there was no plans for a future park, given the defeat of the bonds. But the right-of-way existed for Star Valley, and there was a sewer lift station at the end of Star Valley. And there was also the existing Salt River Project substation at the southwest corner of the site. So all of that property excluding the Red Mountain Ranch HOA Park was rezoned to the public facility district.
Mr. Luna?
Hello, I think part of the issue that happened with this area is there was some signage there that says "future park," and so that caused a lot of confusion among the residents in and around that, that area. Is there a reason why we put a sign up? What was, what was the motivation behind that?
Mayor, council member Luna, when the city goes out and does bond elections, it is typical that staff will put up signs identifying what the future projects are in that area, similar as was done with our last bond election. This was also done back in 2000, and those signs, staff neglected and was oversight from staff, and the signs, the signs were actually never removed. So you are correct, there was a sign that was placed on the property and it was just never removed up until last year. So moving on, so I basically have given you the history of the property. Now I'm going to jump to the more current activities that have been taking place. So in 2017, the planning division received a request for rezoning of the southwest corner of Thomas and Recker. Now, this is not city-owned land, this is private land ownership here. That parcel was about 27 acres, and the request was for a minor general plan amendment and rezoning, which would have allowed residential development. So that's what the proposal was for. It was for medium density. And there was a concern with the elimination of commercial uses to support the area, because that area was, is identified as a mixed-use activity district, which would allow mix of commercial uses to support the area. So there was concerns that were raised by Falcon Field Airport. You can see the property identified with the red arrow there at the southwest corner of Thomas and Recker, and that property is within the 55 DNL area, which is, DNL is the day-night average sound level, which is a metric identified by the Federal Aviation Administration. When you look at this map, you, since we were talking with the earlier presentation about the aircraft, airport overflight area, the AOA zones, they're not identified on this map, other than it has to do with the day-night level categories. And so the 60 DNL, which is identified in yellow on this map, that equates to the AOA 3 area. And so you can see that the property at the southwest corner is not within the AOA 3 area, but it is within what's identified by Falcon Field Airport as the 55 day-night level area. And so there was concerns, yes?
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, but you compared it to our previous conversation when you said that the yellow zone was the, I don't know these terms.
AOA 3.
AOA 3. Would that second dotted line be considered the equivalent of an AOA?
Correct. The, there are no use restrictions after the AOA 3. In fact, there are no use restrictions within the AOA 3 area. It's in the AOA 1 and AOA 2 where we have use restrictions. So basically, within the yellow area and the red area are the AOA 1 and 2 and 3.
So this is just a more restrictive noise identifier than what we actually have at Gateway?
Right.
And I think a lot of that has to do, is, one of the differences between the two airports is while Gateway has big jets that come in that are very loud, there's a much different frequency out at Falcon Field, where you have smaller planes, but they're much more frequent. And so I think there's some sensitivity of why they kind of consider the 55 DNL. Now, you just heard Nana say that the buildings are, that were being proposed are being constrained to 45. So the 55 is on the edge of, I mean, this is Falcon Field, and they do it by, a lot of it is driven by kind of where the complaints come from. But as far as restriction of homes, if we were at Gateway, this wouldn't be a discussion. But it, but it does come to the council, and Falcon Field gets greatly concerned, especially you see this property is, it's directly in line with the runways. And so that's just Falcon Field weighed in because they saw that it fell right in, right at the tip of this area.
Are those the inbound, is that the inbound flight path, or is that the?
You know, I think.
Depends on the direction of the wind.
Yeah, it can be either way, it can be either way.
Yeah, redirect you to come in either one direction or the other, depending on.
And so just to summarize my last question, the AOA 2, or whatever the last project was that we discussed, that would then fall into that yellow zone, if I'm understanding
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Luna?
Mr. Luna.
And that... So here, we're talking about the properties south of Thomas.
Correct.
Not the city-owned property.
Correct.
But it's... I think what Angelica's pointing out is when this application came forward, Falcon Field weighed in and expressed concerns about changing the use from mixed use?
From the mixed-use activity district.
Mixed-use activity, which is what we just saw, right? Moving it from something like what we just were presented to residential, more like the mayor was talking about, more of the single-family residential. That's where they started weighing in. And there really is this idea of more outdoor activity in a residential creates, obviously, more exposure to the noise and the impact. And so this is right on that tip of that area. And so there was, you know, Falcon Field weighed in and said they didn't like the idea of changing this area from the mixed use to more of a single-family residential.
Correct. So yeah, Falcons' concerns were due to airplanes... To runways lining up with that property. And then also, when airplanes are landing, they are flying at a lower level over the property. And so we also received concerns from the Economic Development Advisory Board and our Economic Development Office regarding this parcel going to residential because of the loss of the commercial uses in the area.
I'm sorry, maybe before we leave that point, when this project has been discussed... Or well, it hasn't been discussed in council meetings yet, but we've had members of the public come and say, "You should not proceed with the sale of this property because it violates a long... A decades-old agreement between Falcon Field and the city to not allow development in this area." Do you have any idea what... Does that agreement exist, and what do you know about it?
Mayor, councilmembers, I'm not aware of a very specific agreement about that. There are documents that we found and that were provided to us about specific agreements between pilots and the FAA regarding takeoff and departure routes for pilots. But like I said, with this southern piece, there was concerns from Falcon Field about residential because it was within that 55 DNL area.
But to your point, Mayor, there has been comments made that there's some agreement out there. The only thing we can find, even from Falcon Field, right, is that the tower has some guidelines that speak directly to different patterns in which they can fly around the airport. And that speaks... We're not a party to that agreement. It's between... It's a guideline, or I'm not sure how it's enforced, but it's an understanding so that the pilots and the tower understand a pattern in which they fly around the airport. But it's not... The city's not a party to it. But I think later you'll see... Again, this corner became sensitive to Falcon Field, specifically the alignment of the runways going directly over the top of this corner. That just drew their attention to that issue, so.
Thank you.
Jeremy. Sorry, I'm easily to confuse. I have one last question. So this is specific to a residential property that you're using to compare to the other property that we're getting ready to sell. So where... Okay, perfect.
So Mayor, councilmembers, yeah, there's a reason why I was talking about that property. Because when that zoning case came through, it was determined to be not appropriate to have residential at that location. And that's where the discussion started between the city and that developer, that it wasn't appropriate there. But north of there, the city did own property, and that if there was going to be residential in the area, it was more appropriate to be located north of Thomas. So you see the city's parcel identified on this map in blue. And you can see, again, it's located out of that 55 DNL area. And so in August of 2018, when the city was in discussions and negotiations with that developer in order to trade the land, we went out and had our property appraised. That developer went out and had our property appraised as well. So they provided... Well, we ended up getting an appraisal in August of 2018 from that developer for eight and a half million... A little over eight and a half million dollars. But that developer's appraisal was only for 69 acres of our 132. And so the city's appraisal that came in on May 3 of 2018 came in for $25.5 million. But what was interesting about that appraisal was that it did not deduct any acreage for the city-owned sewer lift station. It did not deduct a buffer for NAMO along that north property line. It did not deduct any undevelopable acreage due to topography. In addition to that, it was for the entire 132 acres, and it was appraised with a proposed residential density of three to three and a half dwelling units per acre. So when that appraisal came to the city, to the staff, we looked at it, and we were excited about the $25.5, but we didn't agree that that was the right appraisal for the property. In addition to that, when that developer to the south looked at our appraisal, he was very concerned because those were not the same assumptions that he had given his appraisal to assess the value of the property. And so we ended up having that developer's appraiser, as well as our appraiser, talk to each other to ensure that they were both using similar assumptions. This is where we received a second appraisal in August of 2018. And the restrictions that were provided to the appraiser included that buffer along the north property line of 588 feet. It also retained 2.7 acres for that sewer lift station, and it reduced the developable acreage down to 94.5 acres due to the topography. In addition to that, there was a restriction or the density for residential development was reduced down to two dwelling units per acre. So then that's the appraisal that we have for the property for $15.6 million. So as we were getting these appraisals and we were working with that developer to the south, the city started to get contacted from brokers and developers that were hearing out in the community that the city was considering partying with this land. And they were very interested in having an opportunity to purchase the property. And so as the negotiations were going forward, we concluded that we were not going to come into an agreement. Like I said, that developer's appraisal of our property was much lower than our appraisal, and we just weren't able to come to an agreement. And so that land trade never went forward. But based on the discussions with that land trade, like I said, we started to get inquiries. And so that's when the city started considering the idea of holding a land auction. And so...
Just quickly, just the point here is we were trying to find a way... The developer was anxious to do a high-quality development in the area, but the compatibility, plus the loss of the mixed-use space that corner was a great concern to the city. So we said, "Well, let's look and see. Maybe we could come up with an opportunity to do a land swap so that you could still do a quality development, but do it on the other side of Thomas." And then the city would do a land swap, but we weren't sure where the values were going to fall out. Once you become familiar with the city's own property, it has a tremendous amount of topography change on it. And that's really became kind of the challenge in the discussions from the appraisers and the developers is really how much of that property is developable? And when you do the appraisal, so how much of that acreage do you really count in the acreage that can be developed that you could build a home on? Because there's a lot of it. There's a major wash going through, and on one end, there's quite a steep slope going up to NAMO tally. So there's a tremendous amount of area. And that was the challenge we were having is trying to come up with something that we could both agree to as far as even just what land was available to be developed. You know, the developer was saying the land was too hard and rocky. And so... But the closest we could get was this $15.6 million and his $8.6. And so quickly, we realized we were just so far apart that we probably weren't going to be able to strike a deal with this developer. So that's kind of... Took a lot of time to get there, but that's where the eventuality came out to.
At some point, a developer had the opportunity to just simply purchase this land from the city for $15.6 million.
Sure, sure.
But then it went to an auction and actually sold for $25 million more than they...
Right. And Councilmember, to your point, we informed that developer that that's what we were going to do and said, "Listen, even if we can't work out this trade, you're certainly welcome to come and participate in the auction." So we didn't exclude him, and we were very open about the process. It was, you know, I think he was disappointed we couldn't come to a conclusion, but I think we both walked away from the table understanding our numbers were just so far apart. But we did offer to him the opportunity... I mean, everybody, to come and participate in the auction.
How many bidders did we have show up to the auction?
So Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, I'll actually get to that in just a second.
Okay, fair enough, sorry.
Maybe before we proceed, I think Frankie, do you have a question?
Yeah, just a curious question on the first appraisal. Was it just oversight that we didn't restrict the pieces as far as deduct acreage for the lift station, the buffers? And so what was the reason?
Yeah, the appraiser probably didn't... We probably didn't ask enough questions. They didn't ask enough questions of us, and we probably didn't. We thought some of that would be obvious. There's a lift station there. And so, yeah, we probably didn't provide enough instruction. We try to be careful, right? We don't want to over-instruct the appraiser. But after it came back, it became very... And it almost became this was almost a throwaway appraisal because it became... Even we agreed with the developer that this wasn't realistic because we were including the buffer. It had all the land for the... It assumed all the land would be developable. We knew that wasn't accurate because of the wash. So we kind of realized... And I think that's where the controversy in staff's mind, that this was... It was an appraisal, but it just really wasn't reflective of really the development opportunity. And that's why we turned around and said, "Wait a minute. Let's go do a second appraisal. We need to put all these conditions in." And we got a lot more thoughtful about the buffer, about really how many acres are developable based on slope and based on where they are. So we... You can see, we reduced even the developable acres significantly to try to get closer to something that, if we put on the market, someone could actually develop. So.
Thank you.
I do have a question on that because if I recall, last year, on that appraisal, we had specifically asked staff if there was... If there was an appraisal for $25 million, and staff has said, "No appraisal exists for $25 million."
That's correct, Councilmember. And we made a mistake. Unfortunately, the individuals that were making that presentation that the question was asked to them were not aware of the first appraisal. The staff member who was responsible for that had just come back, had been on leave from the city for quite a while. He'd come back. And that $25 million was really not even part of the negotiations or any discussion ongoing. But yes, it was there. And I think we informed the council right after that, the next day, that we had made a mistake in that comment. And since then, we have apologized profusely. We have posted it online. We've done everything we can to indicate that, yep, we made a mistake. But we don't... It's not material. It was not part of some... Something that led to something inappropriate. It was just a... The question was asked of a staff member who was not involved at the beginning. The staff member who was responsible, it was just an honest mistake. They had just come back to work from being on Family Matter, and so we made a mistake. But we quickly, as soon as we realized that, we said, "Oops." Next day, we shared it with everybody. We sent it to everybody. It's been online. We've shared it publicly for anybody to look at also.
If I may, one last question. The limitations that we put on the second appraisal, you know, the amount of developable land, the number of houses per acre, however you define that, from a legal perspective, then whoever we... Or if we sell this property, the purchasers would be, in fact, limited to those...
So, Mayor, Councilman Whitaker, I think Angelica will explain that, that even when we went out for the auction, we brought a lot of that forward and got more specific... So that when they were bidding on it, we made... We were... With great intent, we have tried to suggest that the density would be somewhat compatible to what we see across at Red Mountain. We went and talked... Well, I don't... Let her go through the presentation. You're going to see all those elements that she's... We've tried to input and put into this that were known as before the auction took place.
Sorry, Angelica, I keep interrupting you.
That's okay. So I'll just go back to the land auction and just give you a little bit of information about that. So staff had not done a land auction previously, and so we went out and researched what it would take to hold a land auction. Once we had all of that information, we had that presentation to you at a study session back in January. And then we received the direction to proceed. So once we received the direction to proceed, we went ahead and did all of the legal requirements that we needed to based on the city's management policy on holding land auctions. And so we went ahead and noticed the auction in the newspaper. We posted the property, and we mailed out notices. And so as we were moving forward with that, we also reached out to some of our stakeholders, to NAMO tally and Boeing. And staff met with their representatives in order to explain the land auction and the development process that would be required if we ended up with a successful bidder that would end up developing the property. And the comments that we received from NAMO was that they wanted to ensure that there was a 600-foot buffer along the north property line. And the comments that we received from Boeing was that, yes, they did have a concern with any future noise complaints that could be generated from any additional residential in the area. And so they just specified that they wanted to ensure that we would receive a navigation easement, which that is something that we typically do of residential development that is within proximity of an airport, of either of our airports. So we informed them of that. And then in our discussions with them, they also clarified that helicopters... Their helicopters do not fly directly over our property. They fly north. They do eventually head east, but it's not directly over our property. So going forward to the land auction, we did hold it back on March 21st. We did have two bidders that showed up and registered. It was Toll Brothers and Blanford Homes. They each were required to provide a $250,000 cashier's check to register for the auction. They did start bids at $15 million, and the bids increased in $50,000 increments. And Blanford was the successful bidder about an hour or so later at $21.1 million. They did provide 5% of the bid amount in escrow, and so we have $1,055 in escrow from them. And they also executed the purchase and sale agreement, which since March 21st, they've been waiting for us to come forward so that the city can authorize the execution of the purchase and sale agreement. And so we do have Blanford Homes that is a successful bidder. You'll see in the purchase and sale agreement that they are... Their LLC that they'll be using for this development is Desert Vista 101. They are a home builder that has built in Arizona for over 40 years. And they build resort-style master planned communities for families, active adults. You can see some of the pictures of some of their more recent developments in Mesa, Los Angeles, Mulberry, and Mountain Bridge. And so once on Monday, you know, your action on Monday would allow the execution of the purchase and sale agreement from the city. What that would do is start the 12-month feasibility period. So when we sign it, that's when that starts. And after that feasibility period, their money that is in escrow will be non-refundable when that expires. In addition to that, as part of the requirements that we've put in in the purchase and sale agreement, they would have an additional three months to close on the sale of the property. And the city manager, with the way that the information is provided within the purchase and sale agreement, would be allowed to authorize up to three one-month extensions.[1703.23] So at the most, from when the city executes the purchase and sale agreement, Blanford will have up to 18 months to close on the property. Now, there are a lot of requirements that they need to be able to meet before the city will agree to close on the property. They need to provide an acceptable development plan in order to close on the property. And so I'll also get into additional requirements and discussions that we've had regarding a distributed district park. And so we understand from the residents that they do want their district park. And, but based on the outcome of the bond elections, we understand that they didn't want it maybe as it was proposed back in 2000. And so part of what staff is working on and looking to ensure that gets provided is that there are park amenities provided in northeast Mesa, similar to those that were identified in the district park back in the 2000s. In addition to that, we do want Blanford Homes to deliver public amenities within the project as well. And we also want Blanford to work with the Red Mountain Ranch residents in order to find out from them what the desired amenities are that they could then provide within the existing Red Mountain Ranch HOA Park that exists on the west side of Recker that our property surrounds. In addition to that, we want them to work with the residents to identify what other improvements they want. You know, we've heard the passive trails and mentioned about other amenities. And so we want them to find out exactly what it is that the residents want so that it can be incorporated into the project and into the improvements at that Red Mountain HOA Park.
Mr. Luna.
So some of the earnings that we're going to use for the, with the land sale, we're going to distribute it into several areas for the District Parks, District Five, into some of our parks. So you mentioned possibly pickleball courts. I know we still have to work, Mr. Hirschberg, on that. I've been asking for pickleball courts from my, because that's what I hear from my residents. And working with the Red Mountain Ranch community to possibly do additional development around their park area, give them some additional amenities, some passive trails in and around that area, perhaps maybe an overlook, but those are the kind of things that we're looking in terms of distributing those funds throughout District Five. But we're going to work specifically there, as well as some of our parks in District Five. That's correct.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Luna, that is correct.
So Mayor and Councilwoman Luna, as you know, I think the concern, and this is different, you know, because the city staff back at some point told, in a memo, said, we're not going to do a park here. We're not going to do a park here. And I think they did that just to calm everybody down, because they'd been defeated twice. But I think what we've heard is that the residents do enjoy the opportunity to have passive uses of the, of the property. And there's some washes, and obviously the, the area, the buffer between NAMO Tally and the development. As we've talked with the proposed developer, he's indicated he's willing to work to keep those open to the public. So what we, we've identified is the opportunity to use proceeds to help make those permanent, to have those developed out with signage, so they'd be open to the public. But in being, I guess, in being fair to the fact that the dollars that were used were city dollars, and trying to come closer to this district park concept, recognizing maybe putting a lighted ball field across the street from Red Mountain may not be what they want. At least, it appears to us, that's one of the reasons, at least that's what's been told to us, is one of the reasons it was defeated. But nearby, in this, in this area, and obviously in District Five, there are ongoing program, or projects right now for soccer fields, and we have opportunities where we can put in pickleball. So the idea is maybe we would take the proceeds and take parts of the district park, and maybe not put it right here on the site, but go put it in other areas within District Five so that the residents, the intended beneficiaries of these park funds could still receive those benefits. Maybe not right on the site, but certainly in the areas nearby.
Jeremy.
Question on that. So we have, I, I believe in the past, I've heard that when we have our park bonds that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but they're allocated on an annual basis up to the discretion of council, right? Like, it's not, even though you may come out and say, well, we want to build these 15 parks, and the park bond passes, are the funds limited to those 15 parks? Or is it at the future discretion of councils to determine how those funds are distributed?
I'm going to let the city turn, because I think once we put out in the pamphlet, I think there's, you show intention. I don't know, I don't know what the legal obligation is on that, so.
So Mayor and Council, it depends on each of the bond packages, but usually there's a catch-all within the bond package at the end of it that gives flexibility for changes. I'll give you an example, there was one identified for a purchase of Buckhorn Bass. And so the city ultimately did not purchase Buckhorn Bass, because we couldn't come to an agreement on the purchase price. So we weren't, we weren't obligated, and you can imagine if we were obligated, how that would affect the purchase price.
Sure.
We weren't obligated to go purchase Buckhorn Bass. And so there is some flexibility.
And specific to these last two, the auctions related to, sorry, not the auctions, the, the bond initiatives related to this specific park that failed twice, was, were those bond elections specific to this park, or?
Yes.
They were.
There are, there, with, within the question, this park or this location was identified. Does that make sense? Because it was like a, it was a question with a larger amount. It wasn't just this park by itself. It was included with, as I think, as you go back to the beginning, where Angelica said, when they put out their publicity pamphlet, this, this park was identified to be included in the question that was defeated.
If you look at Slide 7.
Question.
Yeah, it said 13, it was a $13 million bond, and it was designated, 9.4 of the 13 was earmarked for this location, for this park.
That was correct, Mayor.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Mayor and Council, I, you know, I, it's been a while since I looked at those publicity pamphlets, but I did look at them as I remember it. I believe it was in the second publicity pamphlet, it was specifically identified. Just off the top of my head, I don't, I don't remember if it was in the first one, just so that, you know, so we're clarified. There, there's obviously more information than what's just in the publicity pamphlet, so I don't know if it had been identified otherwise. But as I remember looking at those publicity pamphlets, I do remember it in the second, but not the first.
Yeah, we have documents that were shared by council to the community. Whether they are publicity pamphlet or not, we know that eight and a half, there was a spreadsheet that identified how they got up to 16.5, and there was eight and a half million in there.
So the, when we purchased the land, it was general obligation bonds?
Correct.
Which is different from a park bond.
Totally different.
It is.
Has a list of.
It is, I think, but the questions come up, right? So we spent $4 million on this property. They came out of bonds that were, and the, the city manager at the time said, well, they're geo-bonds. He said, but we need more parks, right? We need a park in this growing part of the city. So he called, I don't, you know, we'll have to go back and remember how he called it, but he, he specifically said, what's you, we have some funds available for purchasing parkland, whether they were generically geo-bonds or whether they are park bonds. In his mind, those dollars were available for purchasing parks, land, which they, they did, right? They went out and purchased the land for a little over $4 million.
$4,26,000.
$2,000. So, you know, I think from staff's perspective, that kind of, you know, Mr. Lester still, you know, I can still hear his voice in my head. And so his, he's still, so the idea, that thinking, our proposal to council is at a minimum that we, if we sell, if we're to sell this property, this will all to work out, then at least we would say, you know, we have $4 million in this deal. We can certainly go look, and how do we reinvest that now into, again, this distributed park concept is what we're proposing.
Well, so I think we could ask the question, you know, is there, the $4 million that was used back in 1998 to buy this property, was that park bond that creates some sort of legal requirement that thou shalt not use, you know, this property for something unintended?
Right.
And that's not the case. It was a general obligation bond, so there's no legal requirement that this property be developed as a park. We could suggest that there might be some sort of moral, you know, that there were, that's what was our stated reason at the time. And so maybe just to remain consistent with the policy that was announced when this property was purchased, there should be some effort made to accomplish that goal. And so that, when I first saw this phrase, "distributed district park," I had to really think about it. But the more I hear it, the more I think about it, I think this is a great use of words to describe what we're trying to do. I think part of the reason this property has been problematic for the last several decades is because there's been mixed feelings on the part of the Red Mountain Ranch community. We want amenities, we want park amenities, but we don't necessarily want to have lots of lights, lots of parking lots, lots of people from outside of our community coming to this area. So that's the push and the tug and the, and the push on this. So I, I see this as an opportunity to get to a yes, yes, a win-win situation, where in working with the developer, we can say, hey, we want to preserve the open space. We want people to continue to have the opportunity to take their dog for a walk in the desert. We want to provide some additional amenities, some recreational opportunities, and we can work that in to this high-end residential development in a way that's not going to be offensive to the Red Mountain community with all of the maybe slightly more obnoxious activity that comes with having a district community park across the street from your home. But, I'm sorry, I'll get off my soapbox and.
Can we finish?
Yes. Angelica, please, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So, next step, so Blanford does need to come back and provide a development plan. In addition to that, they need to file an application that will be heard by the Planning and Zoning Board and by council for a couple of things. First, the minor general plan amendment to change the general plan land use designation over the property. Also a rezoning to allow the residential development, and then the subdivision planning. In addition to that, they are going to work with the property owners and the residents during the citizen participation process to ensure that their desires are incorporated into the project. And lastly, they will have up to 18 months to meet the conditions in the agreement, which is filing those applications, going through the hearing processes, in order for the city to agree to close on the property. So staff's recommendation for Monday is that council approve the $21.1 million bid and authorize the city manager to execute the purchase and sale agreement, which will start the clock ticking for that feasibility period, which is 12 months. In addition to that, staff is recommending that we begin discussions to allow staff to come back with a proposal for the distributed district park. With that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Thank you, Angelica. Council, additional questions?
I have a comment.
Okay, let's go Mr. Luna, and then Mr. Freeman.
There's, there's going to be a number of opportunities for the public to weigh in, in terms of what they would like in that area. So I just want to make sure that that's out there, because I'm hearing that there hasn't been a public process. Everything that we do is public process. We want to be transparent. We have a meeting on Monday, the public's invited to attend and weigh in. And then they have to go to planning and zoning and all those steps. This is going to take a year and a year and a half, maybe. So I'm hoping that Mr. Blanford, I've spoken to him, he's going to work closely with the Red Mountain Ranch people to get their input and, and to get their ideas in terms of what they would want in that area. Mr. Blanford has an outstanding reputation in District Five, and so I know he's done great projects, so. And maybe Mr. Blanford will be willing to come up and speak a little bit about that, if he's, if that's okay, Mr.?
Mr. Blanford, I'd like to give you the opportunity, if you'd like to say something. Or you, feel free to decline if you'd like to. Go ahead and come up.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Mayor and Council. Obviously, I'm thrilled to be the winning bidder. I'm not sure. No, we, we know this is a challenging site, has a lot of history. Obviously, we've been building that area for a long time, and kind of a fixture in the area. I, I just want to assure the, the council and the mayor that, and the homeowners adjacent to the property, that we'll do the best we can to work with everybody and try to come up with a plan that works for them, works for the city, and works for us. I mean, it's got to work for all three, right? We're committed to, you know, to high-quality development. I think that Mr. Whitaker asked about the density. I don't think it ever got really explained. I think within the purchase and sale agreement, it states that density would be similar to Red Mountain Ranch. So that's our intent. We have a lot of work to do to understand what we can achieve on that site. It's about plus or minus 95 acres of usable land. That could be, you could have 10 engineers, and they could all come up with a slightly different number, but somewhere in that, in that range. So we intend on doing a high-quality, high-level community. I mean, everything we're doing at this point in our, in my career and with our company is to create nice communities that withstand the test of time. And, you know, no, no one community is similar to another one, they're all unique to each other. So that's, that's really our intent. We know it won't be easy, and can answer any questions you may have. And our team, and Tom Lemon, Tom Lemon is a very well-known in the, in the building development community, and he'll be the one that would be running this thing throughout, as well as our engineer and, and land development team, that will work hard with the neighbors and have a lot of experience with this type of development. Of course, working in the, in the desert and the hillside development is not new to us. I would think that for, for homeowners that are curious, that's what we're going to do. You might look at Los Indes Mountain, particularly Los Indes Mountain, not so much Los Indes, because there is a difference between the two. Go further up on the hillside and look at it, and then Mountain Bridge, of course, is a much more current example. Look at other communities that we do in the area, you don't have to go far. Bryan and Greenfield gives you, what, gives you a feel what three homes an acre looks like at Bryan and Greenfield. It's called the Grove of Valencia. Those are good, good examples of that kind of density. So any questions you may have, I'm here to answer them, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Blanford. I just want to comment, I've seen the quality houses that you guys build, and I look forward to seeing what you guys bring to council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jen.
I know that you haven't done the design yet on the, for the property, but is the intent to allow access to the, the trails and, I guess, the washers and the areas that are utilized now being to continue to be accessible to the public? Or is it going to be gated? Or is there any buffer along Recker that you're planning? Is there any general guidelines that you have for the development?
Right, well, that's a good question. It's a, it's a moving target. One, one, we, we definitely know we've got to provide the buffer on the north property. And I, you know, our thought process on that is the city retains the ownership of that northern part of the property, you know, plus or minus 30 acres. And, and pass of parks are built up there, maybe, you know, trail system that is a public trail. I suggested that there's a trailhead there. It might want to be understated a little bit, because I know the Red Mountain Ranch folks kind of have their, their idea of not, they want to, they want to see some amenities, but they don't want it to be too overstated, per se. And that's, that's the way, what we're hearing, and we're looking forward to working with the Red Mountain Ranch folks to learn more about that. We do intend on doing a gated community, that's our intent. That's one of the things that excites us about it. As far as trails that go through the property, I mean, I think it would be more like maybe on the perimeter of the property or the perimeter part of the property. But the biggest thing is we see the use of that northern property, where the views are great and where it's, you know, where you got the protective buffer for, for NAMO. I mean, I think that makes the most sense to, to focus on that area.
And will it be integrated into the Red Mountain Park or whatever that park area is, is existing next to it?
That's a possibility. We've, we've met with one representative of the Red Mountain Ranch community yesterday, actually, and we have a meeting with the board next week. That, the actual time has not been identified, we're waiting to hear from them on this, but we believe it's going to be on the 23rd next of May. We, we've talked about some different ideas, what to do with that park. And even the, you know, does the property want to be, the whole property want to be annexed into the Red Mountain Ranch Community Association or not? You know, we, we think that it does not want to be annexed into the community association, but we feel like there may be an opportunity to do a joint-use park. They want to see more amenities added to that, to their private park. They also, the fact that it's across the street on Recker, it's kind of unique. It's not in the middle of their community, it's more on the outside. And if we build around that park, then that park kind of almost feels like it's more part of the new community and not part of the old. So I had suggested that maybe a joint-use might be the way to go, is we make improvements to the park, and then a pro rate a share of, of annual, you know, cost for maintenance is contributed by the new homeowners association for our community, and they continue to pay their share that they're already paying as well. So that, those are kind of the conversations that are taking place in regards to that park.
The existing park is part of the Red Mountain homeowners community?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Mr. Blanford? All right, thank you very much. I appreciate your willingness to come and speak with us.
Thank you.
Okay, so this was just for information, but this is on our agenda for Monday.
That is correct.
And again, when we approve this sale, what we're saying is we begin the 12-month period to get the entitlements down and to have all the public.
Lets Mr. Blanford to be, go forward and pursue the entitlements, so, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just want to thank Mr. Lester for the foresight. I'm sure spending $4 million back in the day was a pretty, pretty big deal. And then now we have the opportunity to leverage that land into Mr. Blanford buying it, so thank you very much. I know it'll be a beautiful project. With that, you know, theoretically, the bonds for that have been paid off a number of years ago, and I had that discussion with staff. And so the bonds, you know, have been paid, satisfied. The other thing that's important is there have been two elections to build out the park, which we've discussed, and they, they failed each time. I appreciate rezoning it to the public facility that they staffed back at the time. And, and, and again, anytime that we can divest ourselves of some land and get it back out into the community and build neighborhoods, we build just a stronger Mesa, and that's what I'm interested in. And, and then we, we do have a windfall of some money from the sale of land. So I appreciate being able to send that back out in the community. Maybe not all in District Five, but, you know, maybe share in some other districts, but. But I was, I was surprised at the auctioneer's price for his sale was very low, really low to me. But then again, the aircraft path, as it goes over, you know, the aircraft path passes over Red Mountain Ranch already, and this will kind of skirt it a little bit to the northwest. So regardless, I'm in support of this moving forward. Let Mr. Blanford build Desert View or Desert Vista?
Desert Vista.
Desert Vista 101. So thank you very much. So thank you very much.
I have one more question also. Is it, it's my understanding, please clarify me if I'm wrong, that we're going to take approximately $4 million from the sale of this and/or not necessarily?
Well, I think that's what we've recommended. I've recommended, Mr. Freeman probably has some other ideas, and so I think what we do is, can we wait until we get closer to the entitlements? But to that point, I think it's important, if council would agree with this, I mean, you're giving specific action related to Mr. Blanford. What we would like to do, though, because we think it's important for the community to hear this upfront, we would like to begin having those dialogues with Mr. Blanford, with Red Mountain, and figure out what part of this could the city participate in, right, in contributing towards the amenities, the park amenities, that would be public park amenities, as well as looking at the opportunities, whether it's the more active part of the parks, whether it's the soccer fields or the pickleball. And put together a package and bring that to council and have that discussion and establishing a dollar amount. That, again, will only happens if we conclude the closing of the property. It doesn't happen if we're not able to do this. So that's what we'd like to do, if that council's comfortable allowing us to at least move forward in that direction.
I would just like to see the proceeds, you know, to make those improvements for the courts that this area needs and for parks, come from the proceeds of this sale.
Oh, great, great, yes.
And not be yet a bond item or another revenue source.
No, no, absolutely. No, it's fully intended that it would come from the cash proceeds of the sale. That's how, yes, thank you, sorry for that.
No, I just want to clarify my understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. I think this will, this issue will be debated a lot over the next year and a half. This is the beginning of a process, so I'll save my pontificating for one or many of those future meetings, but I think this is a very exciting opportunity for us to have a win-win-win-win-win situation, where all of the people who have an opinion on this come to the table and we'll try to do everything we can to incorporate everyone's concerns into how we move forward.
Mayor, Mike. Mayor, council, just want to follow up on something that Councilmember Luna said, and I think a question that Councilmember Whitaker started to say, but I think we got tangent it off, and that is, council has multiple hats on this, and I just wanted to make clear, as it goes through this process, this agreement does not limit council's authority. And in fact, we went to great detail throughout the document, and it's worth actually reading one paragraph. So if people feel that this somehow limits what's going to end up at the very end, it doesn't. It's going through the standard process. In fact, we say in the agreement, buyer acknowledges that the seller, City of Mesa, is a municipal entity and its agreement to sell the property in this transaction is separate from and does not affect the city's separate powers and authorities, a governmental entity, including but limited to the authority to review applications, and it goes for the general plan and the zoning, and it goes on, and it's actually an entire paragraph and then another sub-paragraph. So this agreement doesn't, and somehow, there's no sort of predestined way in which this is coming out. It is going to go through the standard process. You sign the contract to sell the property, it goes into the feasibility period for 12 months, but then it's going to go through the process.
I do have questions. Is, you know, I think when we did the appraisal and we tried to determine the value of the property prior to selling it, we put, or I guess we suggested limitations on the use of the property that affected the appraisal price, which you could argue would affect the bidder price. So I am curious, like, are there covenants that we plan on putting in the sale agreement that would restrict the buyer from doing any of the things that we requested to affect the appraisal price of the property?
Well, yeah. The ones I think of most specifically are the 600-foot buffer. So that will be, obviously, have to be included. Retaining access to and maintaining our lift station is very important to us, obviously, and how that, and making sure we have, we can get to that, because it's kind of down in the middle of the property. What other, I can't remember what specific...
The density?
Well, the density, again, I think that's what Jim was suggesting. Those are conversations we've asked that, we put in there, I think we indicated that what we're supportive of and looking forward to is something similar to what Red Mountain is across the street, and I think you just heard from Mr. Blanford indicating that was his intentions also.
Yeah, again, I mean, just backing out of the process, my concern would be that if you go and get an appraisal on a property and you say, well, the density of this property has to be as such of, I think it was 2.5 houses per acre, I don't recall from, to, I mean, that's going to affect the appraisal price, right? Like, if you said that the density could be 50 houses per acre, obviously, that, I mean, we've seen the drastic appraisal prices, one for $8 million, one for $25 million, one for $15 million, and then the final sale price is $21 million. So obviously, there's a lot of variables being thrown around here. So I assume, based on Blanford's past, the other products that I've seen them build is going to be a high-quality development, but I think it's only fair that if we created an appraisal that valued the property at a certain price, that those should be added to covenants of the sale of this property to some extent, right?
The density will be up to us. This will be, the Mesa City Council will say, Mr. Blanford, here's how many homes per acre you can build, because we're the ones that are going to approve the zoning case. So, and I'm sure the Red Mountain Ranch folks will be lining up to speak at that zoning hearing and at the city council meeting, so.
Yeah, but I guess my point is, if you go back, again, going back to the appraisal, then why would we specify in the appraisal that the density had to be two houses per acre if we were going to come back and say, oh, we changed our mind, you know, you can put 10 houses per acre? I mean, that affects the appraisal price, that affects the auction price, and so if we weren't going to put those stipulations in place in the beginning, why would we ask the appraisal to use those guidelines to appraise the property?
So, Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, we do have very specific requirements within the purchase and sale agreement that indicate that the density for Red Mountain Ranch should be similar to what's proposed for this site development. And so we do need Blanford to produce a site plan that they can bring forward that shows what the proposed density is. We have tried really hard to not give a specific density, even with the appraisers. When they were going through and trying to assess the value of the property, that was one of the questions that they kept coming back with, the multiple appraisers, the ones that Mr. Beck was using when we were looking at the land exchange, and then also our appraisal for the northwest corner. And at all times, we've always indicated that we were looking for the property to develop with a similar density to what exists in Red Mountain Ranch, because those neighbors are going to be the most affected with the development of this property. And we saw as the density that exists there as something that would be compatible with on the west side of Recker Road. So, yes, initially in our first appraisal, we did not provide a density. We let the appraiser identify that. When he came back with that, we did determine that it was a little too high, and that's why the value came back so high. Once we went back and provided some direction, our appraiser ended up using the two to two and a half dwelling units per acre, and that, correct, that does affect the value of the property. When it went to auction, we ended up with two bidders that were willing to go $21 million. You know, Mr. Blanford was the highest bidder at 21.1, but Toll Brothers was also willing to go $21,050,000.
Yeah, but my point is that I invest in a lot of things, right? And the first thing that you do when you go invest in something is you have to assess the value of what it is that you're investing in. So if I'm hearing you correctly, if you leave it up to the discretion of the appraiser to determine the density based on relation to this existing Red Mountain area, the appraiser comes at $25 million, but then you set stipulations of two houses per acre and it drops the appraisal to $15 million, that's a drastic change on the valuation of the property, which is, you could say that going to auction is an open process and you're going to get fair-market value for whatever that you're selling. But if the assumption is the density of the project and that can affect the price of the property by, you know, what...
But Mayor and Council, this is unusual, right? Typically, the city wouldn't be involved on both ends of the deal. I mean, that's a determination between, and a arms, you know, you would have a developer and a third-party land purchaser making that decision about value and what could be available, but ultimately, the developer has to go get the entitlements. And if, we tried to make an assumption that was fair, we think the council gets to ultimately make the final decision about the density. And so if you feel like the density is different than what the value is, then I guess you can make that decision during the process that you're doing the review on the zoning. But there was no way for us to, we didn't want to, and I think we shared with council what was in the purchase and sale agreement before we went out, this was known, we talked about being consistent with Red Mountain. So now you get to make the final decision about what the density is, as sitting as the final decision-maker on the zoning.
I mean, so perhaps we could make the decision on what the density is going to be prior to the execution of the sale and table the issue?
So, Mayor and Council, you couldn't. That's the whole point, is that you have to go through the entire process to determine the density. You have to go through the planning and zoning process and you have to go and have it at the very end. And so you can't flip that, you can't put the cart in front of the horse. This is why you had two incredibly sophisticated bidders that were there. They've already done this analysis and they've figured out, you know, they're not just looking at our appraisals, they had to look at a lot more factors and what they know what the process is and what it's going to go. And so the point I was trying to make is, the process hasn't, it's just begun. We haven't even signed this contract. There's a whole year of the entire process. And to try to say what the density is right now, that's preordaining the process and that's not giving the citizens an opportunity to come and speak and talk about the quality and what they want to see in those neighborhoods. And in fact, we haven't done that. In fact, that's why there's a certain amount of risk for someone that bid on this property. And so we'll see how this goes through the entire process.
So the city owns the land right now. Are you saying that it wasn't possible for the city to rezone their own land and choose the density prior to holding an auction for sale?
So the density is usually, Mayor and Council, is done as part of not just a rezoning, but you also usually have a site plan or something else that goes along with it. We don't develop homes, so unless you're going to try to provide an entire application, you had to wait and, you don't look at just density in a vacuum, you look at it in the context of the quality of the home and the open space and how it's being utilized. And I can't remember the term we used that we liked, but I'll call them the park area that's the open space, the like linear parks that we, that's intended to be integrated within this development. So you can't look at it just sort of separately like that.
Thanks, Jim.
So again, I don't think we can preordain the outcome of the zoning process, but Mr. Blanford, I think you have something to say on this, but maybe you could give us some, I think, and I think you actually addressed this earlier, but what are your thoughts on the density of your proposed project?
Well, I wanted to directly answer Mr. Whitaker's questions regarding the appraised value and how it might affect the sales price. You've got to understand that the documents that were put out prior to the sale from the city staff included, excuse me, a purchase contract, what you'd have to commit to, and within a purchase contract that talked about density being equal to Red Mountain Ranch. There were about six home builders, national home builders, and myself as a local home builder, that were all kind of nibbling on the property, per se. And it's a small development community, so basically, everybody pretty much knows, particularly when you've got a public auction property. And the engineers talk, the consultants talk, and everybody pretty much knows who's looking at the property. But at the end of the day, too, as Jim Smith pointed out, too, you know, sophisticated developers showed up and bid on the property, and basically, the market spoke by telling you what the value of the property is going to be. You won't ever get anything more transparent than a public live auction. You know, sealed contracts and negotiations behind the scenes and private meetings and things were not transparent. This was totally transparent, so you're getting the market actually speaking as to what they're willing to pay. And then in addition to that, with a 12-month feasibility period with your deposits being non-refundable during that timeframe is unusual. So that even gave more comfort for someone like myself or Toll Brothers to bid to that number. So you've got a fair market value, and it's, fair market value is based on the density that's across the street of Red Mountain Ranch, because that's what the terms of the contract stated it was going to be. So none of us paying attention to the appraised value. I mean, I remember recall reading that appraisal for the first time and thinking that maybe the appraiser was still thinking it was two units an acre over the 132 acres. But it didn't matter because the purchase contract stated what the bid auction terms were going to be about anyway. So I hope that helps answer your question.
Yeah, definitely. I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments regarding this agenda item? All right, the next item then is item three, thus to acknowledge receipt of various board minutes. Is there a motion of that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. I need to acknowledge that Mr. Haredia left a moment ago because he had, he has to represent the city at a Valley Metro Board meeting, so his absence is understood and appreciated and excused. So I'm sorry, we voted on the board minutes. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Smith, we continue to have a quorum present. Okay. The next item, item four, is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Council, Mr. Luna?
Just some activities that I was involved with. We had reading at Jefferson Elementary School. I had opportunity to read to second graders, which was a lot of fun. I was a bilingual book, so I read the Spanish part. Councilmember Duff and I attended the Adelante Healthcare, the CPLC, a mother celebration luncheon, which was a lot of fun. Over at the OY, which is a lot of fun, they made it into a dining area and there's a lot of people there. Yesterday at Jefferson Elementary School, working in conjunction with the City of Mesa, it was Earth Day Challenge Awards, and they were awarded $1,000 for their beautiful artwork that they did to commemorate Earth Day, so that was great. Last night, we had a tenant meeting over at Falcon Field, and it's an opportunity for the Falcon Field staff to talk about what's happening at the airport and get input from the tenants. But a wonderful announcement from the Falcon Field Airport is that 23 acres of land in the airport was, is going to be developed by Davecom Aviation, and so that's really exciting. So we're going to, the airport's going to be developing 340 square feet of new large aircraft hangar space, so I'm very excited to talk about that. It's a great development at the Falcon Field Airport.
Counselor, I think that's an opportunity zone project.
It's an opportunity zone.
That's a big deal.
It's a big deal, it's an opportunity zone project, and we're hoping that some more development does happen, and we're going to try to take advantage of the opportunity zone program.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Mayor, yeah, thank you. Last Thursday night, I hosted a community barbecue meeting at the Mesa Historical Museum, and thank you for attending. And Councilmember Duff, you know, guests got to look at the exhibits inside the museum. The new executive director's done just a marvelous job in bringing life to the museum after 90 days of being in, as the director there. And this showcases our Mesa history. One other item is, while I'm on the subject of community gatherings, I was disappointed to learn that someone filed a complaint with the Attorney General's Office in regards to the West Mesa Town Hall that myself and Councilmember Haredia hosted on April 23rd. The complaint alleges that members of this council violated the open meeting law by having a quorum present and discussing council business at the event without proper notification. Let me say first that this town hall was properly posted with the City of Mesa Clerk's Office stating that a quorum of the council could be present. It was mentioned internally at staff meetings as well as this very council chambers several times during televised study sessions, as well as through social media channels and emails to residents. All laws were followed, every effort possible was made to ensure that the public knew that this town hall would be taking place and to encourage them to attend and participate. It was an opportunity for people to speak directly to their elected representatives. I know I can speak for most of my colleagues on this council when I say that we strive for transparency as it pertains to anything we do as members of the city council. For someone to allege otherwise is not only false, it is hurtful and disrespectful to the people who sit at this dais, who care deeply about the City of Mesa. Not only was this complaint frivolous and unfounded, it was a tremendous waste of staff time and taxpayer money. Not just Mesa taxpayer money, but everyone in the state of Arizona, thanks to the involvement of the Arizona Attorney General. I hope that this person or persons responsible for this accusation would have the courage to apologize to myself, Councilmember Haredia, Councilmember Duff, and Mayor Giles for involving us in this. That's my comment, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I also, I need to comment on the fact that I was honored to participate on Tuesday night at the Benedictine University graduation. That's, I've had that opportunity on several occasions, this is their first, their fifth, rather, commencement since coming to the City of Mesa, and each year, they are larger and more impressive, and it was just fun to be reminded what a great asset Benedictine University is and what an honor it is for the city to partner with them in our downtown. So congratulations. So congratulations to Ben U for a great event on Tuesday night. Anything else under this event? Yes, Jen?
I just wanted to add on to Ben U. About 60% of the graduates were first-time graduates within their families to graduate from college, so I think that's remarkable and is really doing the work that we need to do in Mesa. And so I'm very proud that, that they're right here in downtown Mesa and really elevating our residents to have more opportunities. Along those lines, Councilmember Heredia and I initiated our first Mesa Achieves Higher Education Task Force this, on Tuesday. I'm very excited, we have a lot of really passionate and qualified members helping us put this together, and this is really going to, again, give those opportunities for our residents to gain two years of college or certification in order to achieve, have those jobs to raise the income, as well as attract employers that need a, a educated and qualified workforce. So I'm excited to start on that endeavor. And we also, yesterday, went on a tour at the Hasselt Hazardous Waste Facility, looking at converting food, organics, and other donuts and other things...
[laughing]
...into fuel that we can use in our city vehicles. And artichokes, which did clog the system, and we participated in, in churning that stuff into a humus-looking product that will eventually turn into a biogas. So, no, I'm very proud of the innovation and the work that the City of Mesa is doing in conjunction with ASU and researching this to benefit our city and hopefully, you know, our entire valley and state and, and maybe end up with a marketable product and that we can sell to fuel vehicles instead of fossil fuels. And just, I want to jump, if it's okay, into announcing that I'm very excited, on Monday, we are going to launch our hydration campaign with some water refill stations in downtown Mesa. And we'll be at the main library. There is a water refill station on the west side of the building. It'll be at 9:00 AM, and this is marking an alternative to giving up using plastic bottles and also having water available for all of us to refill our bottles and to any populations on the street that need water year-round. We also will have a hydration station at the Mesa Arts Center and at Pioneer Park and looking at a couple of other places. I'm very, very excited about this move to be more sustainable and be an amenity to our residents.
Thank you, Jen. Thanks for your attendance at all those events, and I share your enthusiasm for the higher ed committee. That's, that's very exciting. Any other comments, Counsel? Mr. Brady, what's our schedule look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, we do have a meeting on Monday, May 20th. Then tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, there's a free water safety event at the Mesa Aquatic Complex. That, it's only, it's limited to the first 300 guests, it's a free event, but if you're interested, you need to look to come early and make sure you get in. And then, of course, a milestone event this weekend with the celebration of the Gilbert Road Light Rail Extension this Saturday, May 18th, from 9:00 AM until noon. And so we invite everybody to come out to the Gilbert Road Main Street Park and Ride. It's a community event, it's free, it'll be carnival-style games and activities, along with the official departure of the first train. We're going to try to keep our garbage trucks out of the roundabout so we don't take off any more arms, so...
So we've already celebrated the loss of the first arm?
Yeah, yeah. You know, someplace, some places cut ribbons, we take out railroad arms.
Okay.
Well, they're coming down. Oh, okay.
I remember, I had a discussion with Mr., with Scott Smith about the meetings you held, debating whether or not that was a good idea to have arms on the roundabout. Okay. We might have that meeting again sometime. All right, thank you, Counsel. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to dismiss this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.